Let me then officially, good morning. The time is now 9:35 a.m. and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of January 11, 2011 is called to order. Governor, you're welcome to sit at the head of the table too if you'd like, whatever's more comfortable.
That's fine.
Okay.
They get a better view this way.
Okay. Let's just get right to that because the governor's been kind enough to give us some of his time today. And I do want to make an admission on my part as state superintendent that I think other people are saying some other things now. I have to admit, last year at this time, when I saw that nerd ad,[41.39][41.39](laughter) I thought, "There's no way this guy can get elected."[46.12][46.12](laughter) But we've had a chance to work together and I can't thank you enough for your energy, your passion, your smarts, the fact that you've done this right out of the block, that you're going to spend a little bit of time with the Board of Ed. I know it's before you run to the auto show, so I know your time is short. But we wanted to give you a chance to say, make some comments. And again, and then the board, I know President Kathleen Strauss and John Austin may have some comments also. But thanks so much for your attendance today. Ladies and gentlemen, let's welcome the governor of the state.[84.53][84.53](applause)
No, I'm honored to be with you and excited. I believe it's a great opportunity. And truly, the work you're doing here is critically important for the future of our state. Our kids are our future. So I really appreciate the efforts and I look forward to an opportunity to learn from you because you have far more expertise in education than I do. So what I would like to have and make sure is we have a great constructive dialogue because we have significant challenges and it's time to address those challenges. We've gone through a period of people fighting too much and now it's time to solve problems. And that's the focus I want to bring to things and that's the discussion I hope to have with you. There's a number of areas that we do want to take on. One of the things I'd really like to look at is what we can come up together with with respect to educational reform. I would like the opportunity to go to the legislature in the first half of this year and make sure we have the opportunity to put any of those issues on the table and see how we can move forward in a positive constructive way. And I want to do this in partnership with both the local school districts, with you in particular, and with the federal government. Been fortunate enough to have some good discussions with Secretary Duncan already in terms of getting his insights and thoughts. And I was just in Washington yesterday. So it's something that as a collaborative effort, I think we have a real opportunity to say, "Let's get out of some of the struggles, the challenges we've had in the past and let's move forward and start looking towards the future." And to do that, that's where, again, I really look forward to the opportunity to learn from you and have a constructive dialogue on what we think is the best way to move forward together. One thing I will push very hard though is a concept that we're trying to communicate to everyone in government is moving forward in a positive way and taking action. I call it relentless positive action because that's the opportunity. We are at the bottom in many respects, not necessarily in education, but in many respects in our state. And the goal here is not to do incrementalism, is not to move from 50 to 47 or 45. So everything I want to look at and everything we're going to exert effort on is how to be best practice in the country or the world. So that's the approach I believe you also share and let's make it a team effort. So thank you for your time and I look forward to learning.
Thank you, Governor.[236.12][236.12](applause)
Well, Governor, those are words we really enjoy hearing. We're delighted that you're here. We welcome you and congratulate you on your smashing victory.
Thank you.
It's really very impressive. And we really look forward to working with you. We look forward to doing just what you said. We have a record of bipartisan cooperation. We thought we were modeling for the legislature.[270.12][270.12](laughter) We hope we'll model for the new legislature. But we've always done everything, almost always unanimously, and we're both Democrats and Republicans. But when we didn't, it wasn't based on party, it was just based on the individual issue when people had different views. And we really pride ourselves on our record of civility and bipartisanship, plus what we've actually accomplished. I mean, we've actually accomplished some good things and we hope to share those with you. And we've done a lot in the area of setting high standards. They're models for the country. We're considered among the best standards in the country. We set state high school graduation requirements, which was a new thing when we did it. They're rigorous. We want to emphasize more relevance and relationships now. That's the other two Rs. But there are all these things that we've really prided ourselves on working on. And we developed a very good model last year. We worked, the board set this up. We invited people to do presentations to us over a period of about six months on how to fix the state's education program, whatever needed to be fixed, and the revenue situation. And we recognized we couldn't get revenue without restructuring. So we called it Reform Restructuring and Revenue. And we know that it was a joint project that John took the leadership of really and we agreed to it unanimously. So we all made some compromises in the process. But we have a good, we have a good plan, which I hope you'll have a chance to see sometime and we can talk about it. We look forward to having meetings with you, our leadership with you on a fairly regular basis if that could be worked out. We're delighted that you have Mike as your education advisor. We think he's pretty good, so (laughter) we're delighted that you do too. So I think we look forward to working hand in hand with you and really correcting the things that need correcting and expanding the things that are really good. And we have a lot of really good things going on in education in Michigan. So I think we have to take credit for the good. And a lot of his attention is paid to the, to the problems which we know we have and we're working on those. But we also should take credit for the excellent schools that we have, the committed teachers, dedicated teachers that we have in Michigan, the administrators. We have so many people that are, that have committed their lives really to providing education to the students in Michigan. And it's for the benefit of the entire state, not just for those students, but we, everybody in the state needs a quality education. And it's the best economic development tool, I think, we have in the state. So we're really looking forward to, to working with you. We're delighted that you're here and we think it sends a strong signal and we're just very pleased. So thank you very much for coming. And I think John Austin might want to say a few words as well.
John, please.
I appreciate that. Also want to say thanks for your words and your interest in, in working together in partnership and having the kind of dialogue that you proposed. You know, we are also very committed to forward-looking relentless reform. We have to make the education system and the outcomes for our people the best in the country. And as Kathy indicated, we've worked together as a board, eager to work with you as the governor and legislature, advancing some of the priorities we think are most important, which I hope we can team up on and find common ground. How do we reimagine our education system so it's totally performance-based, so that we just care about the outcomes? And we insist that the outcomes are real, that young people learn and they graduate and they go on to post-secondary or work or to create new businesses, which we need them to do. How do we make sure we have incredible teaching and incredible teachers, which are the key to driving the achievement gains particularly for those who aren't achieving? We've got as a state to do a lot to ensure that our teachers are the best in the country, all of them everywhere. And that, I think, is a real priority for us to get the kind of outcomes that we need and as the board has said in our plans. And finally, we, we hope that we can find ways in this tough budget climate to work with you to rearrange our budget priorities so that we can tackle the tough issues. How do we restructure and redesign the delivery of education to save money, but also so we can invest in early childhood and in our university education and our community colleges so that we can ensure that we get those outcomes? So those are the kinds of notes that we're making our priorities. We'll talk more about them today as we look ahead. But we're very excited about working together with you to advance our education system in a forward-looking and reform-minded way. So thank you for your, your words of encouragement and your being here to signal our ability to work together. Thank you. And can I ask Nancy or Eileen, as our ranking Republican officers, to also share a few of their perspective? Because as Kathy said, we do have a history of working incredibly well together across the aisle over here. And we're joined at the hip in terms of our reform commitment. And I hope if you have a second, you listen to some of our Republican colleagues have their own perspective.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity, John. I'm going to defer to Eileen, I think, because I, I just didn't, I didn't prepare for this.[631.12][631.12](laughter) In all honesty, I will say that I'm just thrilled to have you here, Governor. I just think it's so important to have that message sent to everyone that this is, this is a team project, it isn't individuals. So I think that that's, that being said, I'm going to turn that over to Eileen and as the ranking Republican here to say a few words on our behalf.
Thank you, Nancy. I'm not prepared either, but that's never stopping.[663.41][663.41](laughter) But I would like to say, by a bizarre set of circumstances, this is my first day back on the board, but she's right, I have two more years on it than Nancy does. One of the things that I find so exciting about you being the governor of the state at this time is that we have a unique opportunity to look at the things that we've done that are well, well-done and to start trying to really reimagine what has to happen for outcomes. I'm delighted to hear John talk about this, but I want to have the board honor the work that's underway right now, the history that we have, the things that have worked in the past, the things that haven't. And also to recognize that there's a moment in time where we could be looking at things like distance learning. We're going to be talking today about making sure that student outcomes are actually reflected in our MEEP scores. We're going to be reshaping the conversation that we're having with the states to make sure that we in Michigan are ready for what's happening in other countries and other, in the other states. And as we do that, there will be change. It'll be gut-wrenching change for the education role too, if we do our job right because of what you're doing and what you have to do to restructure the state's economy. I'm honored to be serving at this time under you. I know that this is a difficult time for the entire state. I know that we'll be changing people's lives. I know that that's a challenge. But I really believe that Michigan wants this change and I'm delighted to be here. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for all your wonderful comments because I view it as a great opportunity and that's why I apologize for somewhat disrupting your meeting at the start, but I thought it was a great opportunity just to come, start the process in a positive way. Comments are wonderful. This is our opportunity to reinvent Michigan and it really, the kids are central to that, our children, our students, and that's our long-term legacy. So you're right at the, the center of this effort. So I really appreciate your hard work. I'm going to let you get back to work, stop disrupting the good things you're going. I look forward to continuing a dialogue. And as Mike knows, we've already started a very good dialogue and he may not know I'm after him again already this week, so (laughter) I look forward to getting an update on how the rest of the meeting goes. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to stop by and introduce myself. I know some of you personally, I've worked with some of you in the past, John and I have had a working relationship. And I look forward to working with all of you over the next few years. So thank you.
Well, you're welcome anytime, you know you're a member of the board.
Can I say something real quick?
Oh, that's Marianne McGuire on the phone. She's, she's visiting her daughter in Los Angeles.
Good morning, Governor, and thank you very much for coming to our meeting. And I just wanted to, to say as one of the board members from Detroit, how much I appreciated your outreach to the city last summer during your campaign. And in that vein, I would urge you to continue a dialogue with the city and with community leaders as well as elected officials. And as you know, we've had some real problems with, with the schools. And I'm very hopeful that with your leadership, we can come to some good decisions there. So thank you again for all your attention and your willingness to help us.
Thanks so much, Governor.
Thank you.
For your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.[888.41][888.41](applause) I have to say, thank you, Governor.[890.41][890.41](noise) That's private board property back there.[892.41][892.41](laughter)
Glad I cleaned my desk.[894.41][894.41](laughter)
Although we're going to, we're going to need, John, you're going to want Cass for the next item anyway.
This'll be lost for hours now.
Okay. President Obama will be here at 10:30.[909.98][909.98](laughter) We're trying to stack them up today. We, no, we appreciate, I know the board and we really appreciate the governor taking his time in his very first month on the job. And I think the board, I appreciate the comments you made to the governor. I think they're very constructive and really helped move the state. So I think we're doing the president's report and then we're going to do the election.
Do you approve the agenda though? I don't think we've done that yet.
Good idea. So approval of agenda and the order of priority.
Yeah.
So moved by Cass, supported by Nancy. Any changes? On favor, I. Opposed, same. I think officially the governor wasn't here because we didn't approve the agenda, so.[962.12][962.12](laughter) President's report. And you know, you've just done a fantastic job, Kath, and we really appreciate your kindness, your vision, your smarts and, but I want to yield to you for your final president's report.
Thank you. I want to wish everybody a happy new year for starters. I should have done that to start altogether. But I think we're off to a very good start with the governor. I think that's, that's very hopeful. Look forward to close working relationships with him. And it's hard to believe that it's 10 years that I've been president of the, it's hard to, you know, time flies when you're having fun, I guess. So I guess I've been having fun despite the frustrations at times, but it's been great. And I want to thank all of you and your predecessors for selecting me five times. It's really, I was honored, very honored and humbled, it's been a real privilege to represent the board. And I, I mean, everybody represents the board, but in the official capacity as president, I really, really did enjoy it. When we, when I started, Michigan's academy was still riding high, we thought. It wasn't just some of these very perceptive observers, but, and some of the people in industry, but we had a different perspective and things have changed so much and we have done a lot to help move the needle, I think. We've tried at any rate to make people understand that the economy has changed, that the kinds of jobs that were there are no longer, and that we have to have people educated to take part in this new economy. So that, and we've responded to that. I think we've accomplished a lot. We faced enormous challenges and we, as I said to the governor, are just changing the graduation requirements, making them state requirements. We worked on that for a long time, looking at the high school, high school graduation requirements and what, what should be included. And that was a big, big step that we took and we did it in a very bipartisan manner. And it was, we lobbied jointly, we lobbied the legislature, we convinced them. I think the fact that we, that we really wanted to include, we have not only English language arts and math and, and science, what are you all looking at up there? Nothing, I guess.[1130.54][1130.54](laughter)
Picture of maybe 10 years, it's kind of a...
Yeah, we're sneaking pictures in there.
No, no, no.
Anyway, it was very important that we included economics and civics and history and geography and the arts. The online learning course, the fact that we added the foreign language requirement, I think was very important because all of those are necessary for full education. We can't just do, English and math are important and science, but we have to do more than that if we want to have well-rounded citizens who will be informed and participating as citizens in their, in our democracy. We went through, we, we had to select superintendents twice and we went through that process in a very constructive fashion. We did it completely in the open, as the Open Meetings Act said we should. We never had one criticism from the press on the process, which was really amazing. Other boards, public boards got into hot water by not doing it right, but we did do it right and we picked two good superintendents. And we did that, that was, that's a major responsibility of the board, is selecting the superintendent. So we, we've done that twice in the last 10 years and we had, we think we came out pretty well with that.
Great, John.[1220.83][1220.83](laughter)
So when, when I started, I, I proposed, I was promoting full-day, full-service schools. I thought schools should be the hub of the community and the buildings are there and they're there at every community. And that we could provide other services, could be headquartered in those buildings as well, health services, social services. And it's been done in a number of schools around the state and it works. The health clinics especially really serve a purpose for the community and gets people in this, into the schools who ordinarily don't feel comfortable going there. I remember visiting, well, I've been in several, one of them that I had been in, in Kalamazoo, was the one that really dragged me on to do this because their, their achievement scores went up. It was amazing. And, and the things that, that the people who worked in the clinic told me about the kinds of questions the students had and the kinds of issues they had, just boggled my mind and it was just very important for that health clinic to be there. Then we were in, Liz and I were in Grand Rapids a couple of years ago, in a, in a section of Grand Rapids that was, that had, at one time, the building was, had built, built like the building of my apartment in the 20s. And it was a beautiful old building that had fallen into disrepair. The neighborhood had gone through a lot of changes. It was now largely Latino and the, the parents were not comfortable going into the school. And they greet, they got a grant from the Kent ISD. I don't know where the Kent ISD got the grant from, but they gave the grant to Grand Rapids to redo this. They renovated the building. They added a health clinic and they added a room for parents, a resource room for parents to come and feel comfortable, sort of with couches and things. Well, the parents started coming to the school for the clinic and then they would wander into the building and they'd sort of peek into their child's class. And before long, they were coming and using this resource room and the scores of the children started going up. It, it makes so much sense. So I think it's really, it's something when I campaigned for reelection this last, two years ago, I brought it up again and people responded very positively to it. So I think it's not, it's not something we should just ignore. We do have a lot more after-school programs now than we did in those days. And that's very important because so many children were going home to empty houses and, or getting into trouble.[1388.25][1388.25](phone ringing) They went home, they watched television, sat in front of the television set all afternoon or they were out on the streets getting into trouble or causing trouble. And it's, the after-school programs have been very helpful, both for tutoring purposes but for recreation purposes as well. And it's, that's something that I was very pleased to do at that time. We brought together people from all the, the social service, human services department, the health department.[1420.54][1420.54](phone ringing) With it because they, they had promoted community schools. And people from all around the state came. So that was, they started doing these after-school programs as a result. So that, I think, had some, had some benefits, not as much as I had hoped, but it was, it was still very good. Let me see. I wrote a lot and I don't think I'm going to read, I'm not going to read it all.
We can read it into the record.
Yes.[1454.04][1454.04](laughter) The whole, we, we set up, oh, this is about eight years ago, maybe, early, maybe nine years.[1464.25][1464.25](phone ringing) The Leading Change Initiative, where we set up five task forces chaired by members of the board to look at the five areas that we thought were important to creating good education. And they, the task, we had about 100 people participated in these task forces and they represented, they represented teachers and administrators, business people, the parents groups, various members of the community, people from nonprofits. John and Eileen chaired the one on ensuring excellent educators. We chaired, the first one was ensuring early childhood literacy because we were convinced, and we still are, very strongly in favor of early childhood education being absolutely a very essential part of making sure that K-12 is successful. So there's a lot of talk now, there was a very good letter to the editor of the Free Press Couple, last week I think it was, supporting, from business people supporting early childhood education as being a very worthwhile investment. But the five task forces were ensuring early childhood literacy, elevating educational leadership, and Marianne McGuire chaired that one and focused on principles, integrating schools and communities because community can't succeed if the schools aren't good and the schools don't succeed if the community isn't supportive of them. So we really have to make sure that we work well with, with the communities. Enhancing the information age, embracing, excuse me, embracing the information age, which was, is technology. And we added a, as a result of that, we added a standard to our teacher standards, that teacher preparation should include more on teaching, future teachers how to embrace technology in their teaching. And ensuring excellent educators, which was the one on, shaky, should we have good teachers in every classroom? So those were really, those reports still guide what we do. That was a very worthwhile endeavor that we undertook that time and we worked on those for about a year with, with the, with the community support. So we figured that those five areas were vital to the future of our children, our schools and our community and our state. So that was a major undertaking. We passed a lot of very, very good policies. We have one on healthy nutrition, which we focused on. We know that children have to have good breakfast to start the day, healthy, and we've been focusing more and more, as you know, on healthy foods, not just giving them, but having them healthy. And just last month, we adopted new, approved nutrition standards. The whole, we have policies on a healthy school environment, making sure the schools are safe. We have a strong anti-bullying policy, model policy for local districts to adopt. The Universal Design for Education with Liz Bowers' leadership, and that undergirds everything we do now. We have one on positive behavior support. We did one on Native American logos to take into account the concerns of the Native American community. We focused on... shaky, shall we have good teachers in every classroom. So those were really, those reports still guide what we do. That was a very worthwhile endeavor that we undertook that time, and we worked on those for about a year with the, with the community support. So we figured that those five areas were vital to the future of our children, our schools, and our community, and our state. So that was a major undertaking. We've passed a lot of very, very good policies. We have one on healthy nutrition, which we focused on, we know that children have to have good breakfast to start the day, healthy, and we've been focusing more and more, as you know, on healthy foods, not just giving them, but having them healthy. And just last month, we adopted new, approved nutrition standards. The whole, we have policies on a healthy school environment, making sure the schools are safe. We have strong anti-bullying policy, model policy for local districts to adopt, the Universal Design for Education with Liz Bowers' leadership, and that undergirds everything we do now. We have one on positive behavior support. We did one on Native American logos to take into account the concerns of the Native American community. We focused on good education and the things that we need to support, the people who provide the education and the students in the school. So we focused a lot on teacher preparation, we're still working on that. That's absolutely critical. As John said, and we all know that we, the importance of the teacher in every classroom is critical. I heard Ernie Duncan on the radio yesterday, on my rubberwood program I was, had on, but he talked about the effect, and we had, we had the man who did that study present to us years ago, Bill, who was from the University of Tennessee at the time, now he's in North Carolina.
Oh, the value-added guy.
The value-added guy, right.
Oh, Ted Saunders.
Saunders, right. He came and presented to us. Thanks, Nancy.
Started chicken after that.
Right. But he presented to us, and we, you know, he gave us the background, and this is what Ernie Duncan was quoting yesterday, that a good teacher, if a student has a good teacher for three years in a row, he does much better the rest of his life in school, and then probably in life. And if you have a poor teacher, the effects are cumulative as well. So the value-added, that's what we're basing all this, this teacher valuation on now, too, the value-added and how good it is. We've had all these people come in and talk to us over the years, and it's been, it's been very, very important. And now, this past year, as we talked about before, we developed this, our report on reform, restructure, and revenue, based on the board setting up the program, asking the speakers, picking the speakers, getting the speakers, and then working through what we wanted the report to say, which was a major accomplishment in my estimation. So I'm really proud of what we've done, and I'm proud of all of my colleagues, and I look forward, I said it over and over again, how pleased I am at the way we have worked collegially in a very civil, grown-up manner, and I'm looking forward to that continuing, and I know that we're going to be doing good things in the next two years, next eight, next whatever. So I thank you all very much for your trust in me and letting me do this for ten years, and I appreciate your support and your help, your understanding, and I thank you.
I just wanted to, on behalf of the board, and we're actually channeling many of the good minds we have, and including Eileen Hamilton, just retired as board secretary, say a few words, you know, celebrating your tenure as state board president, but also reminding us all, you are going to be with us and active and a part of our team for the foreseeable future and for a long time, hopefully. You know, you've been so strong an advocate for the constitutional role of the board, that the board was set up, as you probably recall, in the sixties, as a long-serving, eight-year terms, put it, a board that would purposely be above politics of the moment to take the longer view, and to be the champion for education and what needs to happen to drive education forward in the long term. And you've been a fierce advocate for the, maintaining the role of the board and its responsibility. And then, as you noted, you have led us in accomplishing so much in this state. So before we look ahead again, as you mentioned, this board under your presidency has passed forty-eight education policies of note, many of which are nationally recognized as in the vanguard of thoughtful, innovative education policy. I mean, you mentioned several of them, the high expectations K-12 content, the high school reforms, the assessment regimes, MEET merit that we have put in place, health, nutrition, universal education, anti-bullying, Twenty First Century Schools, the round school learning, which Michigan created, and our commitment to teacher and administrative credentialing. You have been recognized already, and you're not done yet, with significant awards, the NASB Distinguished Service Award, the MEMSA Educational Leadership Award, the Bernd Seifelt Lifetime Achievement Award, the Eight Over Eighty Tickem Olum Award. But Kathy told me the one she's proudest about is the Federal Bar Association's Wade McCree Award for Social Justice, which she received a year ago, or two years ago, a lifetime of delivery on social justice, not just commitment to but achievement in. But for me, all of those accomplishments, policies, recognitions, aren't what's important. What's important is what has happened to learning outcomes in Michigan during, on your watch, under your leadership. And over the last ten years, Michigan's NAEP scores in fourth and eighth grade, math have gone up, our reading scores are up, our Michigan Merit scores, which are new, are moving up, AP test-taking has doubled over the past ten years, community college enrollments are exploding, up eighty percent over the past ten years, university enrollments up, more people are achieving and realizing what you started out in your remarks, we need a next step of education. And, you know, I think, I just read a quote in the paper, Terry Babett, Mona Shore Superintendent, was quoted as saying, "Everyone today is so focused on student learning, student learning, that is different from a decade ago." We all in the state, our education stakeholders, have, I hope, contributed to that, but you have led and can take some ownership of those education improvements that have been encouraged and facilitated and nurtured on your watch. And so we are electing officers today, and I appreciate your willingness to pass the baton to someone at this table, but also wanted to herald your leadership and appreciate it very much, and in ways that you are too humble to note. And on behalf of the board, say thanks for your presidency, and thank you for continuing with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. That was just a great summary and reminds us of so many achievements that Kathy's been responsible for. You know what I forgot to do in the, first of all, welcome, Eileen and Richard, as new members, we're so happy to have you at the table. And I forgot to actually have formal introductions, typically, by our new and great, well, soon-to-be-new, I guess there's a formal action item coming up at some point today, but I just, I want to say this for a moment, I mean, I watched Mertz here late every night the last week to try to get this ready, and I just can't thank her enough for her dedication. I did say to her last night, you can't burn out at this, though, too, so we're going to have to just make some adjustments, but just great. But your first formal kind of activity here would then be to make introductions as you, as we do typically.
Okay, so I'd like to introduce the people at the table to you, the board. The chairman of the board, seated here to my left, is Michael Flanagan. He's the superintendent of public instruction, and he serves as chairman of the board. The president of the board is Kathleen Strauss, she's from Detroit. The vice president of the board is John Austin, he's from Ann Arbor. Mary Ann Maguire usually sits right in this chair to the left of John Austin, but she's on the telephone, right, Mary Ann?
Yes, I am.
She's from Detroit. Richard Zile, who's here at his first Board of Education meeting, newly elected, is also from Detroit. Matenga Rigatz, who is the Teacher of the Year for this school year, and she teaches in Grand Ledge, she's a global studies teacher in high school. Eileen Weiser, I don't know, are we calling you new or not, Eileen? Eileen has been, had served on the board before, she's from Ann Arbor, and she is beginning a new term. Cassandra Albridge, from Rochester Hills. Dan Varner, he's from Detroit. Nancy Danhoff, the board's NASB delegate, she's from East Lansing. And Mike told you, I'm Marilyn Schneider. There's staff here, you want to raise your hand when I say your name, then people can recognize you. Sally Vaughn is the chief academic officer and deputy superintendent. Carol Wallenberg, deputy superintendent. Mary Alice Galloway, deputy superintendent, school reform officer. Marty Ackley, director of communications. Lisa Handsconnect, legislative director. Lindy Bush, director of early childhood education and family services. Mary Ann Chartrand, director grants coordination and school support. Patty Cantu, director career and technical education services. Janet Laverdy, brand new, also in her position, director of financial management. Linda Forward, director education improvement and innovation. Flora Jenkins, director of professional preparation. Joseph Martino, director education assessment and accountability. Hopefully, I caught everybody. And the association people that I know. And if I, if you're here and I have not mentioned your name, if you'd introduce yourself to me at some point, I would greatly appreciate that, so I could introduce you the next time. Jim Ballard, Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals. David Borris, Network of Michigan Educators. Bruce Fay, Wayne Rifa. Bill Mays, Michigan Association of School Administrators. David Michelson. And Linda Myers, from the Michigan Education Association. Judy Pritchett-McCombe, intermediate school district. Linda Wasick, Michigan Association of School Administrators. And Billy Wimmer, Michigan Council of Charter School Authorizers. Good?
Thank you. Thank you, Marilyn.
We have an alias, so no one knows it's called me.
Graduate now, too, her full name.
Right, right. The first item, an important item, obviously, as John referred to, is the election of state board of education officers for the 2011-12 year. And each odd year, and this is a particularly odd year, that according to the bylaws, the state board of ed members elect officers for president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, and NASB delegate. That's the National Association of State Boards of Education. So this is kind of how it works for those that are new and don't remember, but the chairman, in this case, that's me, declares that nominations are in order for the office of president, and each board member wishing to do so may make one nomination, a second is not required, but may be made if so desired. Are there nominations for the office of president of the state board of education? Kathleen?
Well, I would like to nominate John Austin. John has been on the board now for...
Ten years.
Ten years. And we have worked very closely together this whole ten years, and he has been an outstanding board member. As I said to the governor, John took the lead on developing our proposal, our plan, reform, restructure, and revenue. He's a policy wonk of the first order. In fact, that's his profession, so you get two for the price of one, so to speak. And I'd like to formally nominate John president of the board.
Nominated by John Austin. Eileen?
I would like to support John's nomination, which I know is mine, but I also want to address the possibility of a co-presidency. Today, we listened to the governor, and I'm quoting his words, actually, I'm describing his passion for education and his interest in supporting us, and his commitment to collaboration and moving forward together, which he stated several times, in a new Republican administration, which is the reality. While we're independent of that administration, as a constitutionally mandated entity, we have to work effectively within the state, within all the constituency who are impacted by education. Kathleen's reflection on our past history of civility and bipartisan cooperation is absolutely accurate, Kathleen. It's been twelve years since I came on this board. I walked into you, co-president, with Dorothy Beardmore. And if I'm right, the two of you, I can't remember whether you, oh, she was president, and then you were vice president, and then you were president and she was vice president. But I remember that it brought the best of everybody's thinking, that there was an openness to the board that was particularly useful at the time, because it was during the Governor Engels administration. So while the board was close to split or dominated by Democrats, it gave us an opportunity to be able to talk to the administration in a way that might not have happened otherwise. The board currently has five Democrats and three Republicans, but we're in a new Republican administration with a door that's wide open at this point. I would like to think that it's time for a co-presidency, because I believe that we have a better opportunity for a vibrant visionary bipartisan board at that, with that. And I wish I could take care, take part in this leadership cycle, but I have two more years to go for my service on the National Assessment Governing Board and its 12th Grade NAEP High School Commission, which is really important work, and I'll be bringing that, that vision and that information to the board at various times. So I would like to nominate Nancy Danhoff as co-vice president of the state board of education. I'm confident that as co-presidents, they would present the board's case, actually goals, vision, and the necessary items that we know have to be done with the legislature and with schools and with children. I believe that they would present it very well to the administration, to our school personnel, and to the citizens of Michigan. Thanks.
Thank you, Eileen.
Was that co-vice president or co-president?
Well, it's co-president.
Okay.
Okay, I will admit, I'm, I'm on process here for a minute, so...
Are there any more nominations?
Yeah, are there any more nominations? It's just that, there's a nomination for John as president, and then there's a separate nomination for the concept of co-president, or...
Well, we can do, it's in the bylaws, at that time, we had a four-four board. That's, the legislature had a fifty-fifty Democrat-Republican, and they, they had co-speakers, and we had, we solved our problem by having co-presidents, but it was a four-four board at that time.
So, how does that affect process?
Well, excuse me, I'm just... It's part of the rationale for why there was a co-president proposed.
I was asking the process question.
Process question. I'm actually thinking out loud to help me with maybe how we establish that first vote. It seems that we need to decide...
There's a motion on the table, there's a motion on the table, has to be seconded.
Which it was. So the motion on the table that was seconded was John Austin as president?
But the bylaws state that a second is not necessary.
The second is not required in this.
Okay.
But there's another motion on the table.
There's a motion on the table, which is John, John Austin, co-presidency with Eileen Weiser.
With Nancy Danhoff.
Nancy Danhoff. Sorry. Eileen's motion, this co-presidency with John Austin, serving with Nancy Danhoff.
But there would already be a substitute motion?
Lisa's going to help me with that.
The current motion you're on is this motion, she could be offering an amendment to the motion, or it's a next motion to be taken up after this.
I would suggest it would be a separate motion to nominate Nancy for president after whatever vote is taken on my president. Can we have discussion on the first motion? I very much, as Eileen knows, appreciate the spirit of symbolizing our bipartisanship. I also know that when I was elected ten years ago, it turned the board to a Democratic majority. We, and I was a strong champion of that at the time, and under eight years of a Democratic governor, fiercely advocated and ensured that we had Republican partners in leadership positions, which we have had, as secretary of the board. And so I would certainly propose that we continue that pattern. We have famously succeeded at working in our bipartisan way with that configuration, and so I would offer that kind of encouragement for the kind of configuration that I think makes sense. We are in this interesting world of partisan office holders, respecting our election and our constituencies, and so I welcome the nomination for president, but I respectfully discourage the notion of a co-presidency.
Procedurally, it does indicate that I need to inquire of the nominees in reverse order of being nominated, whether the nominees accept the nominations.
I do.
I absolutely do.
Okay. Sorry, I'm stumbling through this a little bit, I didn't anticipate this. Are there any more nominations for president of the state board of education? Okay, so the nominations are closed. A roll-call vote needs to be taken, I'm just not exactly clear on which...
Are we done with discussion?
Please, finish discussion.
I know we're not. I think it's important as we move forward, that we move forward, to say that we have done something in the past, although laudable and although notable, it's not a reason to do it, to go forward. I think that what we need to do is to take the best advantage we can for the children of Michigan, to be able to have the most open doors possible, as we go through some very, very tough economic times, and we have some very tough decisions to make, that we give ourselves, avail ourselves of all of the possible alternatives, all the possible means of communication, all the possible means of finding support to best serve the children of Michigan. I think this co-presidency allows that to happen. I think it doesn't diminish the degree of rapport, respect, and honor on any one individual. I think it just gives us the best possible alternative to do the job that needs to be done, so that we, in the most successful way, serve the needs of our children of the state. So in that respect, I would support that motion that Eileen makes.
Well, the motion on the floor, as I understand it, is the motion to elect John as president.
That's correct.
So... Well, the motion on the floor, as I understand it, is the motion to elect John as President.
That's correct.
So...
I have one procedural question to ask, and I don't know where to direct this to, but I'll...
I'll try. I'll try. I think we have it.
If we, if we take the vote on John, and because I understand this is the current motion on the floor, and the vote is that he is accepted, then does that include the next vote, the possibility of having a co-presidency or not?
I think the way that we just figured this out, please, Richard.
Point of procedure. What you really have, what Eileen's motion is, is to create an office. So logically, the office has to be created prior to nomination. So I think in order, I think before we proceed, we really have to vote on, do we want to create the Office of Co-Presidents, and then we can take nominations for it. So I would think the next item would be to vote on the office, and then we can proceed with, then we know how to proceed with nominations.
I think it's very similar to that, but what we just looked up was a variation of that. It's that in effect, we have an amendment on the floor, and I should ask for a vote on that amendment first, which in effect would determine whether or not there's majority approval for a co-presidency, and then based on whether that is voted up or down. So before I call for that, though, any further discussion on the amendment, which in effect is for a co-presidency, in effect what Richard just described. If there's no further discussion, then I think there's, the amendment is whether, is to have a co-presidency with both John and Nancy as co-presidents.
Do you need me to restate that?
That would be great.
I move that we decide whether or not, or decide that the board has a co-presidency shared by Nancy Danhoff and John Austin.
If I can ask for a roll call vote, that Merz will walk us through here.
Can I point of information?
Yes, please.
I thought we were going to take a vote on whether or not to have the position, not who would be in the position.
That would be true.
I think that's, I think that would be a clarification.
Okay, well, let's do that, if that's acceptable.
It's really is a motion to amend.
It's a motion in alignment with the bylaws to allow for a co-presidency.
That's basically back to what, so if that's...
I have another point of information. When there's a bylaws change, don't we have to have a month or two's notice before changing that?
It is in our bylaws that that possibility exists, Mary Ann, so I think we just need to vote on whether we want it in this situation or not.
Okay, so it is existing in the bylaws. That's on the table, and if I can ask Marilyn for a roll call vote.
Okay, so you're voting for the Office of Co-Presidency, is that where we've landed?
For the concept of...
For the Office, it's whether or not the State Board would allow for a co-presidency, the Office of Co-Presidency at this election.
Just slightly restating on whether or not we'd like to fill the office. I mean, so the office exists in the bylaws already, it sounds as though, so I think the question is whether or not we'd like to currently fill the Office of Co-Presidency.
Is that acceptable?
Totally acceptable. I'll keep on amending with great ideas.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm stumbling through this a little bit, not helpful, but, so please, if you would have a roll call vote, Marilyn.
Okay. John Austin?
No.
Nancy Danhoff?
Yes.
Mary Ann McGuire?
No.
Kathleen Strauss?
No.
Cassandra Albridge?
No.
Daniel Varner?
No.
Eileen Weiser?
Yes.
Richard Zile?
Yes.
Five-three, three ayes, five noes.
So the motion fails. Okay. So now we move to that first motion. Is everyone satisfied with that? We move to the first motion, which is nominations had closed, but I want to make sure that's still clear. And this motion is for John Austin as President of the State Board of Education. Any further discussion? We can have a roll call vote, please.
Point of procedure.
Yes, sir.
Can you legally vote if you're not physically present?
Yes, if there's a quorum here.
Need to have a quorum present. Okay, this vote is for John Austin, President of the State Board of Education. John Austin?
Yes.
Nancy Danhoff?
Yes.
Mary Ann McGuire?
Yes.
Kathleen Strauss?
Yes.
Cassandra Albridge?
Yes.
Daniel Varner?
Yes.
Eileen Weiser?
Yes.
Richard Zile?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, John Austin, President of the State Board of Education. Congratulations, John.
Congratulations, John.
Congratulations, John.
And thank the board for that vote. Appreciate it. I think that's a positive signal for our constituents on the second vote. Now I open, the nominations are in order for Vice President of the State Board. Eileen?
I nominate Nancy Danhoff. Her six years of service on the State Board of Education, her vast experience in a variety of settings in K through 16 education, her services as NASB delegate, all lead me to believe that she would be an exemplary member of the Executive Committee and an extraordinary liaison to the legislature and to the governor in our current situation.
Thank you. Any further nominations?
I'd like to nominate Cassandra Albridge.
Mary Ann, thank you. Cassandra Albridge is on the table, nominated. Any further nominations? Can I ask in reverse order, as it says, whether or not those nominated would accept the nomination? Cassandra?
Yes.
Nancy? Yes. And as there are no further nominations, each member of the board will give the name of the nominee for whom she or he is voting. So in this roll call, that's the procedure. You'll mention the name that you're voting for in this particular case, for Vice President of the State Board of Education. And Merz, if you would have a roll call to that effect, please.
John Austin.
Cassandra Albridge.
Nancy Danhoff.
Nancy Danhoff.
Mary Ann McGuire?
Cassandra Albridge.
Kathleen Strauss?
Cassandra Albridge.
Cassandra Albridge.
Michael.
Daniel Varner?
Cassandra Albridge.
Eileen Weiser?
Nancy Danhoff.
Richard Zile?
Nancy Danhoff.
Five-three vote in favor of Cassandra Albridge.
Well, as Chairman, I declare the name of Cassandra Albridge as elected Vice President of the State Board of Ed. Nominations are now hereby in order for the Office of Secretary of the State Board of Education. Eileen Weiser?
Actually, I defer to John.
I would like to nominate Nancy Danhoff for all of the reasons we've articulated already for Secretary of the State Board of Education, and as a strong partner in advancing our agenda.
Any further nominations? Nancy, would you accept this? Thank you. So a roll call, please, again.
John Austin?
Yes, Nancy Danhoff.
In favor or not of Nancy Danhoff, Secretary of State Board of Education? Yes?
Yes.
Nancy Danhoff?
Yes.
Mary Ann McGuire?
Yes.
Kathleen Strauss?
Yes.
Cassandra Albridge?
Yes.
Daniel Varner?
Yes.
Eileen Weiser?
Yes.
Richard Zile?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Nancy Danhoff, Secretary of State Board of Education.
Thank you. Nominations are now in order for Treasurer of the State Board of Education. Cassandra, please.
I would like to nominate Mary Ann McGuire for Treasurer.
Any further nominations? Mary Ann, would you accept that nomination?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you. Any further nominations? Then roll call, please, for Mary Ann McGuire as Treasurer of the State Board of Education.
A or nay for Mary Ann McGuire, Treasurer of State Board of Education? John Austin?
A.
Nancy Danhoff?
Aye.
Mary Ann McGuire?
Aye.
Kathleen Strauss?
Aye.
Cassandra Albridge?
Aye.
Daniel Varner?
Yes.
Eileen Weiser?
Yes.
Richard Zile?
Affirmative.
Unanimous vote for Mary Ann McGuire for Treasurer of State Board of Education.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Congratulations.
And then finally, nominations are in order for the NASB delegate from the Michigan State Board of Education.
I would like to nominate Richard Zile for the NASB delegate. I will tell you that the first thing I found out when I came on the board six years ago was that there was a NASB delegate. I didn't even know there was such an animal, and that it was probably one of the most fortuitous situations that I found myself in to be nominated for that. It truly is an opportunity for you to see not only what else is out there in education, but to also be able to benefit from the peers that you have in the other 49 states and how their education systems function, so that we can gain and garner the best ideas possible, and to bring, and come together for a networking of best ideas and research on what needs to be done on the next leading education issues in the country. I valued my last six years on that board, and I think it is a phenomenal opportunity for any of us, and so I think Richard would, not only would we benefit by having Richard, but will his peers around the country will benefit by having Richard as well.
I'd like to second the nomination unnecessarily, but also because I think it's terrific that Richard will be our advocate at NASB, and he'll be a terrific ambassador for our reform agenda nationally, and he'll learn a ton, as Nancy said, about his peers and our state board work, so I look forward to that.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations? And Richard, would you accept that nomination?
It's an unanticipated honor. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll have a roll call vote to that effect.
A or nay for Richard Zile for NASB delegate? John Austin?
Aye.
Nancy Danhoff?
Aye.
Mary Ann McGuire?
Aye.
Kathleen Strauss?
Aye.
Cassandra Albridge?
Aye.
Daniel Varner?
Aye.
Eileen Weiser?
Aye.
Richard Zile?
Aye.
Unanimous approval, Richard Zile for NASB delegate to the State Board of Education.
Great, well...
Could I just take a minute, or half a minute, to say thank you to Nancy for all her years of service on the board, on the NASB board, and for representing us nationally so aptly. So, thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Mary Ann. I second that.
Great, thank you, and congratulations to all the officers and the delegate. John, please.
Can I just say a word, as, one, I appreciate your unanimous support for President, and I look forward to trying to model and live up to the example Kathleen has set. We need to work together, and we will. We're going to be an amazingly inclusive group. Let me just say, as we now have decided on officers, our coming together across party lines will continue, if I have any way to encourage that. As Eileen noted, our, we don't have an executive committee. We have an informal senior officers advisory group or agenda planning group, which has historically been informally, not in our bylaws, because we've resisted having a formal executive committee. We've had an agenda setting group that includes the President, Vice President, Secretary. Let me also say, I'm committed to make sure that agenda planning group and all our work is inclusive to all, so all are welcome to participate in all of our processes, planning and others. If we have to call special meetings and make sure we have a forum there to do that, we will do that. And want to continue the pattern that we've had of strong collaboration, because the work is so important, and as our former colleague Reggie Turner noted, we have to rise above politics as the State Board of Education, and take the opportunity to take that long view and work together. And let me just note, as we decide on officers, we have a board that's five-three Democratic majority. We have three officers who are Democrats and two officers that are Republicans, which is a fine pattern for modeling the inclusion in our formal decision-making. Not that those officers' roles mean a lot. They mean what we make them to be, and as our total board work does. Everyone will contribute and does contribute, whether they're an officer or not. And I need your help, if I'm going to serve effectively as President, to work together and to tap your energy, excitement, enthusiasm, and commitment in a powerful way, and I'm going to be looking more to you all, not less, as President of the Board, but I appreciate very much your support. I also appreciate the spirit in which this discussion was had today about our configuration. So, thank you.
Thank you. I've got as a transition point, now I'm glad I did even more so. I think it's just a quick podcast. I had asked Governor Granholm if she might be able to stop by before she left, and I had asked the same thing of Governor Snyder, and, well, this is what happened, and we didn't anticipate, it was a last-minute thing, but this is kind of what happened. I thought I'd share it with you, and to thank our staff, we have some great folks here at MDE.
Now, as State Superintendent, I couldn't have been luckier to have been here during a time of Governor Granholm, who got what we needed to do, and started the ball rolling in a dramatic way towards student achievement being the first and foremost thing, and took on some tough forces, the high school graduation requirements. And then I had an opportunity, as you know, last week for some time with Governor-elect Snyder, and I just, I don't have to say this, we're kind of independent, although kind of independent, but I was so impressed, and I thought, this is the right person for the right time to take this and move it the next step along with his partner. You know, I'm not into sucking up. I mean, I think, I think that I, you know, there's no reason that... Brian, you got to be with the program. One other thing, I mean, it's going to show, because this drives me every day, and I know we had a great staff meeting earlier this week, where I can't tell you, Governor, Governor-elect, Lieutenant Governor-elect, this, I've worked as a local superintendent, intermediate, association man, this is the best team I have ever worked with. They are dedicated to the kids and to the state, and I just, we didn't want to miss the opportunity, we had a chance to say that in front of you, but this is what drives me, and we each have our own version of this. Our granddaughter Ella Grace, and in fact, I replaced my official picture in the front here with that. Drives me every day, and we have our own version of trying to think. So the thing we've been talking about is reimagining education with Governor Granholm and now with Governor Snyder, and I think if we, there is an urgency. I mean, already, these kids are wired so differently than we are, and for us to still use the same methodologies that we've had is not going to work anymore, and we're getting to individual education plans for all children, which we should have done a long time ago. But we, the urgency is, the system needs to be dramatically different before Ella Grace gets to school. It should be now. You know, as State Superintendent, I couldn't have been luckier to have been here during...
We didn't do this twice. But I thought it was a great timing, in a way, to show that they were willing to come over in a bipartisan way. You don't often see that in transitions. You know, sometimes each of, the predecessor and the successor are often a little cautious about being seen together, frankly, even that. So it was a nice surprise when we got the call. I was actually expecting that if they were to take it up at all, one might come over and say, I can make it over today, and we'd call the staff together real quickly, and another one might. So when they worked that out, I thought it was great. Our staff, it really made their day, to say the least, so I thought that would be a way to get us to the next item, which is, from my point of view, one of the most important items of the day, and that's the appointment of the State Board of Education Executive. And as you know, the bylaws of the State Board of Education say that members of the State Board shall appoint a State Board Executive, and so I'd like to entertain a motion.
Well, it gives me great pleasure to rule that the State Board appoint Marilyn Schneider as our State Board Executive.
Support.
She's been terrific working with Eileen, and she knows the workings of the office. She's smart, she's got a great sense of humor, fortunately. She knows us all, and she's going to do a great job. I don't know how she's going to do it alone. She's going to need some kind of help, and we're looking forward to having some policy-type assistance along the way, too, but I'm happy to nominate Marilyn as our State Board Executive.
Sorry I jumped in there too quickly, but I was so excited about that. I will support that. It seems to me that most people don't understand what it takes to put together the policy decision-making process, the public meetings, the collaboration, coordination between the State Board, the Department, the legislature, and the governor's office, and the people of the state of Michigan. And Marilyn does that phenomenally, and this position is something that is essential, not just important, essential to the full functioning of the State Board of Education.
Thank you. So it's moved by Kat, supported by Nancy. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Merz officially in.
It was unanimous, too.
It was.
Thank you.
You know, and I might say in... You know, and I might say, in this little clip, you heard me say, well, we're kind of independent. We're clearly constitutionally independent, but we are approved in terms of our budget by folks outside this room, the legislature, the governor. And as many of you know, this is our first month with 60 fewer people than we had last month, and we haven't been approved to hire any of those replacements yet. We expect and hope that we'll be able to replace half, and that'll, that will be, that will become evident in the next month or so. I think the governor, I was invited to, I don't think he called it a cabinet meeting, but it was cabinet folks at a budget session last week, and our budget is due for the following year, this Friday, so they're clearly on an expedited attempt to put together a budget, and we'll just have to wait and see what the impact of that is. I think all departments have been hit significantly, so it's not as if we're sitting here alone. But as the board knows, and I'm saying this as much for some of our visitors today, who are good enough to join us in person, that we're going to still try our best, that this is our third year of pretty dramatic cuts in the department, and we're going to continue with folks like Merz who, who step up to these, these jobs, and appreciate their, their service. Okay.